Good morning, everyone. I will call the meeting to order for Friday, November 19th, 2021. Myra, can we get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Zimmerman.
Here.
Commissioner Winnebago. Commissioner Simmons. Commissioner Brown.
There.
Commissioner Pennsyl.
Present.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Beach.
Here.
Commissioner Cox.
Here.
Commissioner Bligh.
President.
We do number four, President.
All right, great. Well, we're gonna, I think we're gonna pause the meeting for a second and present some important awards and make some recognition. So pause for one second while Talby and I move. Okay, they forgot it's all, so. One second, one second, hold this thing over. Can, can everybody hear me on the phone? Good, okay.
I can.
Perfect. Well, good morning, everyone. My name is Justin Zimmerman, and I'm Vice Chair of the Board of Commissioners. And we would like to start this meeting with some special recognition for our Metro Transit operators, who have gone above and beyond to serve the St. Louis region during this global pandemic. And we're gonna introduce three of those dedicated operators who are here with us today. First, we've got Kimberly Evans from Metrobus, who has perfect attendance since the start of the pandemic and has been working at ByState for 25 years. We've also got Jackie Williams from MetroLink, who I believe also has 25 years service. We have Jerome Pamkin from Metro Coleride, who's been here for 12 years. And I'm not sure if he's here yet, he'll be coming in shortly, but also Reginald Howard, Senior, who is also the president and agent of the Local Transit Union 788. Thank you and to all of your fellow operators for your service, especially during the last 19 months as you face challenges unlike any seen before in our history. Echoing our appreciation are Talby Roach, Jessica Medford Miller, Trenese Winters, Jeff Butler, and Martin Gully. So we'll give a round of applause for our operators. And then I'll go ahead, for those of you that aren't in the room, I'm gonna read some of the language on these proclamations, just to, just to highlight the significance of it. "On behalf of the ByState Development Board of Commissioners, we do hereby recognize the operators of MetroLink, Metrobus, and Metro Coleride for their exemplary service to the St. Louis region during the COVID-19 pandemic. In bestowing this honor upon the operators, the ByState Development Board of Commissioners recognizes the exceptional service and dedication they bring to the Metro Transit organization and the St. Louis region. Whereas the St. Louis region, like every other part of the nation, has been and is greatly impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic, and whereas throughout the pandemic, the operators of MetroLink, Metrobus, and Metro Coleride provide exemplary service to the St. Louis region diligently, day in and day out, serving on the front line to provide public transit service to the St. Louis region. And whereas the operators of MetroLink, Metrobus, and Metro Coleride have a longstanding record of excellence and of going beyond and above the standard and routine to provide exemplary transit service in the region, therefore, be it proclaimed that the ByState Development Board of Commissioners expresses its sincerest appreciation to the operators of MetroLink, Metrobus, and Metro Coleride, and declares today, Friday, November 21st, as MetroLink, Metrobus, and Metro Coleride Operators' Day." Thank you so much, guys, I appreciate it. Okay, I'll take a break.
Good morning, everybody. What, what a fantastic day. I like to say, as I was saying to our operators, what this is about is recognizing that we, and the board is recognizing in the city and so on, is that we are actually standing behind you. As they say, frontline workers means frontline. And through the frontline, you all have been in front in the face of a pandemic. And recognizing your everyday work and courage is part of what we're trying to do today. I just wanna thank you so much, I can't thank you enough. I can't thank these great managers who have been there too, working hard. Jessica, your efforts have been notable, and I'm, I'm very pleased to do this. So, but it is not just us, it of course are the electeds. And the electeds who stand behind this organization as well, representing the citizens of St. Louis County, St. Clair County, and the city of St. Louis. And this morning, representing Dr. Sam Page, County Executive, is Paul Hamble. Paul, thank you so much for being here. Really do appreciate it.
Outstanding morning.
Very good.
Take a beautiful morning.
We did, and Paul gets the, gets the extra award as Paul. I think you had a beautiful ride on MetroLink this morning, is that right?
I certainly did, yes, I did. Mr. Morris, a 10-year veteran of MetroLink, picked me up this morning at the Grunwich Station, and his pleasant and pleasing professional manner made a trip outstanding today. And it just reminds me that every day, these awesome people, these awesome operators, take us as far east as Scott Air Force Base, as far west as Eureka, as far north as Spanish Lake, and all the way into the farthest corners of South St. Louis County. So it is indeed a pleasure to be here representing Dr. Sam Page in St. Louis County to honor these great people. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul, and of course, thank you, County Executive Sam Page. And now we move to the city of St. Louis. And Don Rowe is representing Mayor Tishara Jones and the proclamation from the city as well. Don, you care to say a few things?
Good morning, everybody. I'm a member of Tishara Jones's cabinet as the Planning Director. In that role, I work a lot with people that are in this building, because we're looking at collaborations as to where the station goes, dots on the map, and, and lines between the two. But what we've just witnessed is, it's really the frontline that gets people from place to place. And it's with great gratitude that during the COVID time, that people boarding a transit opportunity may not have seen the driver, may have heard the voice over the speaker, but it may be the first voice they heard that day, the first connection to the outside world from their family. And that truly is a frontline, and that truly is to be commended and appreciated for all that they've done. Thank you.
Thank you, Don, and of course, thank you to, to the great mayor of the city of St. Louis. Now, of course, I am not Herb Simmons, I'm not, don't nearly have the, the, the smoothness of Herb Simmons. Herb Simmons, of course, is the Chair of the Transit District, and of course, one of my Board of Commissioners, and representing St. Clair County normally, but Herb was taken away on personal matters this morning. I think he is on the line, so thank you, Herb, of course. But we also have a proclamation from County Chairman Mark Kern. And of course, St. Clair County is one of these great partners. And of course, let me just read a few lines from that. "Whereas the COVID-19 global pandemic brought new challenges to our nation and the ByState region and to St. Clair County in 2020 and 2021, access to public transit has reached a critical level, especially for the frontline workers at hospitals, urgent care centers, clinics, healthcare facilities, pharmacies, grocery stores, nursing homes, and other businesses and organizations. And whereas the operators of Metro Transit, these fine people went above and beyond to provide essential transit for service in St. Clair County and beyond. Now therefore, please, be it, be it acclaimed that I, Mark A. Kern, County Board Chairman, do hereby complain, proclaim, November the 19th, 2021, as Transit Operators' Day throughout St. Clair County." Thank you very much, Chairman. Okay. Oh, okay. Very good, okay. So, thank you again. We are mercifully towards the end, and thank you so much for being here. Thanks again to Kimberly, amazing person, Jackie, Jerome. I, I hope you are as proud to wear the uniform that, that you have as I am proud to see it. I think I am asked many, many times by this Board of Commissioners about you all, the frontline workers, what we need to do to support you in your very important jobs in moving the region. I just wanna thank everybody for their time, thank everybody for these great proclamations, and I think we're good.
We're gonna take one picture.
We're gonna take one picture.
If you all would join on the podium, we can actually show you to the folks at home. Guys, come on, fill in, fill in behind, scooch in. Tell me, put your mask on, please.
There is also operators that in the city of St. Louis.
Yeah, if you want pictures, let me know, if you have anything else.
I remember, hey, good, sorry, get stuck for long meetings.
I'm gonna get, thank you, Commissioner, just get back, wasn't nothing.
All right. So does the public, actually.
Okay, everybody still there?
Thank you, everybody, for your patience. I have some operators this morning are thrilled. I wish you could be here to see the expressions on their face. So thank you very much for your patience and of course, for the proclamation. I think we're good to go.
We're good to go? Okay, I loaded my iPad back up. So that was Agenda Item Number Three. We are on to Agenda Item Number Four, Public Comment. Several public comment cards were received for today's meeting, and the comments were distributed to all of the commissioners. And thank you to the public for their input. Your comments are important to us. Due to time constraints and the number and the amount of business to be conducted at today's meeting, we will not be reading the comments aloud. However, they are contained in the meeting materials on the BSD website. The comments will also be included in the minutes of today's meeting. All of the comments received today pertain to service, reduction, and workforce shortage issues. It's my understanding that Jessica Medford Miller, Executive Director of Metro Transit, and President Talby Roach will be providing an update and additional information regarding these issues at today's meeting under Operations Report. I would just add to that, I'm gonna speak with folks, I'm gonna speak with Talby and Rose. Obviously, if we were in person today, there would be public comments. So I think we need to, you know, come up with some plan to either read a certain percentage of them or, you know, something like that, or select a few, because I, I do think it's a public meeting, we need to read some of these comments. But given this today, I'm fine with proceeding. I just wanted to let everybody know, we can, we can discuss it going forward. Number five, approval of the minutes of the October 1st, 2021 Board of Commissioners' Open Meeting. These minutes have been provided for review by the Board. Does anybody have any corrections to the minutes from that meeting? Okay, hearing none. Will anyone make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the October 1st, 2021 meeting?
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Vote carries. Agenda Item Number Six is the Review of Notes from the Canceled Board of Commissioners' Open Meeting on September 21st, 2021. Notes from this meeting have been provided for review by the Board. As this was not an official meeting, due to lack of a quorum, the information that was provided was informational only, and a vote to approve is not needed. Anybody have any comments on that, even though there's no vote, just while we're here? Hearing none, I'm gonna move on to Agenda Item Number Seven, which is the Report of the President, Talby Roach.
Thank you, Commissioner. Good morning, everyone. So I, I, we're gonna move quickly, and my comments will be brief this morning, but of course, not only me, but staff have looked at all of these very important public comments. And please let me assure the Commission and the public that, for instance, associated with some of the reduction in service, which we are doing for one reason and one reason only. Unfortunately, our workforce constraints mean that we are forced to cut some service. This very much is not a financial move. It is strictly because of the availability of labor, and we are doing everything we can. One thing that I wanna assure the Commission is that staff has been out on these routes, meeting with folks one-on-one. They have been out at the Ballast Transfer Center, out at the North County Transit Center, talking to people. Can speak to this very briefly, but we have been out there. Obviously, folks are not happy about it, I don't, do not blame them. We, we very reluctantly are moving into this paradigm. On the other side, we will be looking at all of these attracting new folks to this very important profession. As you know, this, this Board of Commission has authorized the $2,000 signing bonus for new employees, including a referral bonus to our existing employees to attract more people to this, to this fine profession. And we'll continue to look at, at those pieces of benefits, and we'll be happy to discuss those on an ongoing basis as we review how the market works. I want to also say that I have heard from different aldermen and women and council members. I do return those calls on a one-on-one basis whenever there are service effects. And we, we stand up and try to square our shoulders and answer all of those issues. But if there's one thing that you could do for us, it is to talk about, A, how, what a great job our frontline professionals are doing. I have many operators who are working overtime shifts right now. And of course, talking about the jobs that we have available. Please remember the website, work@metroSTL.com. If you happen to talk to somebody about a great career at Metro, please let them know. I'm very proud of, of those frontline workers, they work very hard, they deserve to be honored. But we also need to stand behind them. And that concludes my comments this morning, Vice Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Talby. Does anybody have any questions or comments in response to Talby's comments? Hearing none, thank you. And it goes without saying, as we've said before, not only retract, attracting new employees, but anything we can do to retain current ones. Bring it to, you or Jessica, bring it to the Board. Within, within reason, I'm sure this group will support it, because we, their shortage is real, and these service cuts have a very, very real impact. So thank you for the update. Agenda Item Number Eight is the Report of the Audit, Finance, and Administration Committee. So I am going to report to myself and everybody else here. So this is a, a report from the virtual meeting of the Audit, Finance, and Administration Committee that was held on October 15th, 2021. The draft minutes of that meeting are included in your Board Packet today. Under Item Number Eight, the AFA Committee is introducing one item for your consideration today with the Committee's recommendation for approval, under Item Number Thirteen, Twenty-third Amendment to the ByState Development Agency of the Metropolitan, of the, sorry, Missouri, Illinois District and Local 788 Amalgamated Transit Union AFL-CIO Employees Pension Plan. Several informational items were also presented to the Committee at an October meeting, including the IAD Audit Follow-Up Summary from the First Quarter of Fiscal Year 2022, the IAD Status Report, First Quarter Fiscal Year 2022, IAD SSO Status Report, Third Quarter Calendar Year 2021, Pension Audits Update, Treasurers Report, Procurement Report. And this concludes my report for the Audit, Finance, and Administration Committee Meeting. Any questions or comments in response to that before I move on? All right. We also have a report of the Operations Committee Meeting, and I will also read that in Chair Winmiller's absence. As many of you remember, a virtual meeting of the Operations Committee was held on October 15th, 2021, immediately following the Audit, Finance, and Administration Committee Meeting. The draft minutes of that meeting are included in your Board Packet today, under Item Number Nine. The Operations Committee is introducing seven items on the Consent Agenda for your consideration today, under Item Number Twelve, with the Committee's recommendation for approval. Those items include Item Number Twelve, which is A, Parkway Interlocking Richmond Heights Turnout Design Contract Extension; B, Contract Modification MetroLink Structures Inspection Program; C, Contract Modification, Time Extension, and Contract Amount Increase; On-Call General Engineering Consulting Communications Systems Engineering Service; D, Contract Award North County Transit Center and Civic Center Transit Cleaning Service; E, St. Louis Downtown Airport Surplus Property; F, 2021 Annual Surplus Property Holdings; and G, Extension of Pilot Fair Program to Remote Access Equity and Ridership. In addition, at the October Committee Meeting, an operations report was provided by Jessica Medford Miller, the Executive Director of Metro Transit. And this concludes my report for the Operations Committee Meeting. Does anybody have any comments or questions in response to the report from that Commission Meeting? All right, hearing none, I'm gonna move on to Agenda Item Number Twelve, which is a report from the Safety and Security Meeting, and I think Commissioner Simmons is gonna give this report.
Thank you, Vice Chair. As the Safety and Security Meeting was canceled for October, I have no report at this time to get, thank you.
All right, thank you. So then Agenda Item Number Twelve is the Consent Agenda. So if everybody could take a look at that. And assuming there is no adjustments to the Consent Agenda, I would request a motion to approve the Consent Agenda Items A through G as listed under Item Number Twelve.
So moved.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? All right, Agenda Item Number Thirteen is the Twenty-third Amendment to the ByState Development Agency of the Missouri, Illinois District and Local 788 Amalgamated Transit Union AFL-CIO Employees Pension Plan, this Resolution 1172. As I said a few minutes ago, this item has been recommended for approval by the Audit, Finance, and Administration Committee, and I would request a motion to approve this Agenda Item.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Move, passes. Agenda Item Number Fourteen is a Memorandum of Understanding Between Citizens for Modern Transit, St. Clair County Transit District, and ByState Development, Development of a Bus Stop at the Belleville MetroLink Station. Talby, do you wanna comment on this before we vote?
This is just the exact same very successful plan that was done at the Emerson Park Station, but, and this is being sponsored by our partners, the St. Clair County Transit District. They are thrilled about the prospect. And we'll also be doing one of these projects in, at the North Hanley Station, but it does not require, because it is not technically an intergovernmental grant agreement, but it, because of Illinois law, we do have to do this. So thank you, it's this continuation of this really worthwhile project.
Great. Any questions or comments on Agenda Item Number Fourteen? Hearing none, I would request a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none. Agenda Item Number Fifteen is authorizing the President and CEO to pursue plans and financing for the MetroLink Secure Platform Project, Resolution 1174. Again, Talby, I'll turn it over to you for comments.
Good morning, Commissioners. You asked for an update about how this project was going, which we have discussed several times. And I mean, I am very happy to report that it is going well. In fact, we have several private sector commitments towards funding to do a public-private partnership, looked at, looking at securing our platform plans. Staff is moving forward with the design of these plans, you've seen an example of the packet. But now that this is becoming a reality, and we are, are having these commitments roll in the door. In fact, to date, we have private sector commitments of $5,250,000. In order for me to accept those dollars and have them parked by our CFO, Tammy Fulbright, for this great project, I do have to ask Board Authorization to do so. We will essentially park these funds to move forward. We have several other pledges that are pending, but I cannot mention those yet until those, those documents are finalized. This allows me, however, to go, the, the legal step that is required to build this public-private partnership to indeed change the system. So I'm very thrilled about this. I wanna give some time towards asking questions about the packet. I will tell you what the packet means is great partnership. One of our great partners, and you did see an editorial from Kathy Osborne of RBC, is we have these sort of private sector partners who are endorsing MetroLink, who are seeing the value economically of MetroLink and Metrobus in the greater St. Louis area, and partnering with us to move us into a new era, and of course, secure the system. So I'm thrilled to present it to you today. I'm asking for the authorization so that we can accept some of these funds and keep moving. And of course, these will require further briefings. And with that, I will pause and address any questions.
I'm all for the, of course, accepting the funds, and I think it's great. It's great news, great to hear, and I appreciate the package. I guess my first question would be, the, the first call we had was actually back in last May about this, and what's, what's the timeline looking on this?
So, so I, as, as noted in that presentation, we are working to try to, to, to secure private sector commitments of right, at my estimate, at $13 million. So we are not quite halfway there. I do think that we will be able to move forward with those commitments and have them in place towards the very first part, so have the legal parts done in the first part of January of 2022. At the same time, on a parallel basis, we are looking, and staff is looking at the design so that we can move forward and be sure that, that we are working on parallel paths on this worthwhile project. I, I suspect that once we put this project out to bid and, and start moving through, and I do not know the phasing and so on, that this will be between 24 and 30 months of construction. Please, albeit depending on bid schedule and which phasing we do of the project. But please note that that is an estimate off the top of my head. I know several of my engineers just panicked when I, when I mentioned those, those months, but I think a timeline But I think a timeline is reasonable for the commission commissioners to expect, and that will be part of my forthcoming presentation.
So, you know, maybe two to four years until it's completed. I guess my biggest thing is I just want to get it started, you know? And so are we waiting until we have to wait until we get all those public funds? Or, you know, I don't, that's where I'm trying to figure out when. It sounds like January, we're going to kind of keep things moving, but I'm just really excited about it. And I think the board seemed like it was was excited as well about it.
Yeah, I agree, Commissioner. I just don't want to commit to something and not make it. But so while we are moving through the legal documents and getting the the financial commitments. And so we know that we're on our way, and I actually have financial commitments in hand that that the General Counsel has reviewed the documents. I just can't sign them until you you guys tell me okay, quite frankly. So so this this opens the door for us now to formally move forward, which will help me set that timeline. I'm not trying to be obtuse with you, Commissioner. It's just I don't I'm I'm giving you estimates of when I think I'll be able to complete the legal documents to have the funds in place. Then, of course, we will work with each of our individual funders to be sure that the pursuit and the type of system that is selected is is gets the endorsement of those funders. And of course, I will give those presentations to the electeds. As you noted in your package, I got a a letter that is cosigned. And please let me let me emphasize, it is unusual to have a public project that has the endorsement of the Mayor of St. Louis, the County Executive of St. Clair, and of course, the County Executive of the county, all financially supporting this or or at least their their political influence. So I'm sorry to say this in so many words, but I I would characterize it right now as a project in development, which will then allow me to put a better timeline along when I have secured those funds, and I expect that to be in the beginning of January 2022.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments from the board? I'll I'll make a comment, really a question, but I think I think it's great. Talby, the consensus you've built on this, I'm happy to see the the letters of support in there. And and frankly, I think it's it's great to see this project go from a concept to start to get some legs to it. I would I would just add, every time we talk big picture, and I'm glad the the business community and the support for MetroLink is great, but just we've also got to remember Metrobus. I know we can do both at the same time, but I just
Great point.
the amount of capital and the amount of emphasis on this is is great, and I think it'll be successful. But a majority of our riders are Metrobus riders, and I just want to make sure we're also focusing on long-term, you know, long-term on that system as well. And that's that's just kind of not a critique, just a just a reminder, and I tell you that every time we talk about it. So but anyway, with with that being said, I would like a a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 15 and authorize Talby to pursue the financing for this.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes. Agenda Item Number 16 is the New Board Policy, Section 30.090, a donation and gift policy. And I think this is somewhat related to what we just discussed, but I will turn it over to Talby and Barb for comments on this.
Yes, Commissioner, it's completely related. I just want to assure the Board of Commissioners that once we secure the document, I am I'm handling over handing handing the legal baton over to our General Counsel Barb Enning. And one of the things that was necessary is for us to update the donation and gift policy. Is that a fair statement, Barb?
Yes, actually, we didn't actually have a board policy regarding donations. And so it's just good business practice that we do because it provides some guidance for the agency as well as provide some guidance for our donors and potential donors. So it's a it's an important policy and instrument document to have in place.
I don't know if anybody else has, or hopefully you've all read it. I totally understand we're getting, you know, millions of dollars in donations. We need to have some type. But the only the only thing I will say, and we may have, we may have bylaws on this, and I just I I may forget. I think it's pretty clear the language refers to the agency. I just want to make sure when we're talking about encouraging gifts or donations. Barb, do we do we have bylaws prohibiting, you know, donations for individual employees or board members? If that makes sense? Because that would be, we don't have to, I'll still support this today. I just I think this clearly says the the agency, so I can see that's obviously very different than an individual. I just, you know, you see it sometimes with large organizations, you have prohibitions. For example, if three or four people are, you know, submitting bids to the like for the new bi-state software or something. You know, you wouldn't want vendors making donations to employees and that or, you know, you know, giving them gifts or things like that. And most most organizations have some type of prohibition or a cap on that. So that was the only, I mean, I think rereading this, I think it's pretty clear it's referring to the agency and not some person. I just, we if we don't have language on that, we may want to consider it. Because I just anytime you're encouraging a gift or donation, that's just something that I didn't want, I wanted to avoid any confusion on the two very different situations. But anyway, that was my only comment to this. I understand why it's necessary with the with the pledges. Anybody else have any questions or concerns on this? Okay. Hearing none, I will request a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 16, the New Board Policy Regarding the Donation and Gift Policy.
So move.
So move. Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, the the motion carries. Agenda Item Number 17 is the Approval of the 2022 Board and Committee Meeting Schedule. A draft of the 2022 Board and Board and Committee Meetings Schedule was distributed to the Board of Commissioners for review. Staff has received no objections to the dates. If there are no objections and no discussion, a motion would be needed to approve our schedule for next year.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, the motion carries. Item Number 18 is the Operations Report, and Jessica Medford-Miller will provide this.
Good morning, Commissioners, colleagues, and members of the public who are tuning in today. I'd like to spend the time on our operations report this morning, focusing on responding to the many public comments that we have received, comments both to the Board of Commissioners as well as received through our social media channels, our customer service team, and comments and feedback given to our staff who are out in the field right now, reaching out to our customers to ensure they are aware of and are prepared for the service change that's about to take place on Monday, November 29. I've reviewed all of the comments and feedback. And I want to say first, thank you to our customers for taking the time to share your sentiments with us. It both makes us better and holds us accountable. Some of the themes that we have heard from these comments are, number one, that we need greater frequency on our system, especially on our Metrobus routes, and not less frequency, and and that point is well taken. You want us to focus more on operator pay. We understand that we are committed to providing a competitive wage and benefit package so that we can recruit and retain those important frontline team members who deliver our service to our customers every day. In addition to more frequency, you want sustainable service. In recent memory, the number one category for customer complaints on our system has been just in the last several months, and that has been missed trips. Last month, we missed a little over 3% of our Metrobus trips. We did execute all of our scheduled MetroLink trips, but we are still denying about 26% of our requests for ADA trips aboard Colorado Ride. That is a reasonable complaint area, and we must do better at providing sustainable, reliable service to our customers each day. We've also heard your call for investments in our system. You want us to do better, to provide a more comfortable, safe, and attractive system, including everything from benches and shelters at accessible bus stops to investments in system expansion and clean energy. I'd like to give you a brief update on some of the actions that we're taking to address your concern. First, first with respect to service. We are in the midst of a tremendous challenge, just as we're trying to emerge from the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic and ramp up our service. Our goal, by the way, in this fiscal year is to operate about 90% of pre-pandemic Metrobus and MetroLink service. Demand for Colorado Ride service remains pretty close to what it was before the pandemic. Just as we try to emerge from our reduced service level, we are struggling to attract and retain team members across the entire agency, especially in our essential positions like operators, mechanics, and electricians. The result in recent months has been that we're missing trips. We're not actually able to field that 90% level of service. Result is that our customers are sometimes left behind at their bus stop. They don't know if or when we're going to arrive. That is untenable and is unsustainable. And we cannot leave to chance each day which runs get out by virtue of who is present on a day-to-day basis. And so we have made the very difficult decision to reduce that service level to a point that we know we can sustain with our existing and projected personal resources. This allows us to take those resources, those operators and those buses, and to assign them strategically throughout the system to ensure that we can provide a consistent, reliable service level that is integrated and has coordinating schedules and connections between buses and between buses and trains. This also allows us to be very deliberate about equity, ensuring that we're putting those resources where they are most needed on a day-to-day basis. This also, in the months ahead, will allow us, as we add to our workforce, to restore what we call our extra board. Our extra board is an essential part of our team. They are the staff that provide relief for days off, vacations, and when we need additional service out there, for instance, when we have peaks in demand, as we know we're going to in the upcoming holiday season, we can add those additional trips out there. In recent months, we have been unable to respond in this fashion, and that limits our ability to be responsive and nimble. This is a very difficult decision and one that is not taken lightly. As Mr. Roach mentioned, we are out in the field right now this week. Last week, we are riding with our customers on impacted routes. We are present at transit centers, making sure our customers are aware of the new schedules that are coming, and also acclimating our customers to new services in some markets, including in North and West St. Louis County, where we are supplementing our fixed route Metrobus service with via Metro STL on-demand service. We're utilizing this at times of day and/or locations where we think we can do better and be more responsive and reduce our customers' total travel time with a demand-responsive vehicle. This is not a strategy that's going to work on our large urban lines. The strategy for most of our service area is frequent bus service. That is fundamental to good transit service. That frequent bus service also has to be supplemented by a network of investments in the community, and that's everything from bus stops to new vehicles, to capital investments in our light rail stations. Let me tell you what we're doing about our workforce shortage. It's difficult. We're we're not making the progress that we we'd like. We can, and we must do better. In the two months that have passed since this board authorized our sign-on bonus, our referral bonus, and our employee appreciation incentive, thank you, Commissioners, that has been extremely helpful. We have hired 16 new team members. We have seen attrition in our Colorado Ride or Para-Transit Team, which is our most heavily impacted team, subside. I am confident that in the next quarter, we will ramp up and be able to field the overwhelming majority of our requested Colorado Ride trips and be able to not only field that scheduled Metrobus service, but restore that essential extra board. We're conducting monthly open houses, hiring events, that is, at our main shop. Those have been productive. Just in the last two weeks, we have also announced that on a selective basis for certain positions like operators, we will welcome back retirees to work with us on a part-time basis, thanks to new guidance issued by the IRS. I'm hopeful that these part-time retirees will help provide us much-needed additional service, especially in the peak periods. So I look forward to that occurring on Metrobus and on MetroColorado. We're also working to expand our net of potential candidates. Very soon, Colorado Ride will welcome candidates beginning at age 18 instead of age 21. We're also working to hire in mechanics at age 18 rather than 21, and this is essential for recruiting individuals coming out of high school and into trade and vocational programs. We're also working right now, and I'm very excited about this, with our local ATU and ATU, that's Amalgamated Transit Union International, to develop an apprenticeship program for operators and mechanics. We have also developed and will launch next quarter a mentoring program for our new operators so that we can improve retention in those early months of employment. We currently have training classes in progress for Metrobus and MetroColorado. We will have a training class for MetroLink operators in the month of January. We are making progress, but there are still further actions that we will need to take, and I look forward to having those conversations with this commission in the near future. Our work has been made especially difficult throughout the pandemic. We know that the expectations of employees across all industries, not just in transit, have changed. We have to focus more on providing a better work-life balance and a competitive wage and benefit package. This is challenging in our 24/7, 365 cadence within the transit industry. We have to have team members who work third shift to maintain those vehicles while they're not out on the street. We have to have operators pulling out of the garages before 4 o'clock in the morning and pulling in after 1 o'clock in the morning, and we have to ramp up at those peak periods. And so constructing those schedules is difficult, but we are working now to find ways to make that better so that these roles are more attractive and we can provide a more rewarding experience, both for our existing valued team members and our potential team members that will join us in the future. Beyond our immediate service concern, I want to assure you and our customers that we are continuing to make good progress on improving our system. We are pursuing and implementing significant investments across the transit system in notable areas, including station enhancement, and that includes our bus stations. We've got a project you'll soon see construction on called Community Mobility Hubs. And this initiative, with the help of specific federal funding, is going to allow us to construct mobility hubs or miniature stations, not transit centers and not bus stops, but stations throughout our service area at key transfer points that are well-connected to the built environment and promote and create a sense of place where customers can conveniently transfer between routes and between modes. We have a continued program of investments in bus stops and shelters because we know that every day, bus stops are the front door for the majority of metro customers, and we must make those investments. We have a strong MetroLink station maintenance program. As our system approaches 30 years of age, we've got a lot of work to do on our stations, including rehabilitation. In early 2022, you will see us kick off rehabilitation for both our Convention Center and subsequently Eighth and Pine MetroLink stations. We also have projects active right now focused on things like parking lots, lighting, platform surfaces at our other 38 stations. You'll also soon see an enhancement project focused on our North Hanley MetroLink Station and Transit Center. One of the areas of focus that I am very excited about is our Vehicle Modernization and Clean Energy Program. We are committed to reducing our carbon footprint here at Metro. We have a program in place, and we've made great progress at reducing the carbon footprint of our operating facilities. In this past June, we saw great success with the lawn In this past June, we saw great success with the launch of our Battery Electric Bus Program with 18 buses. We've received four additional buses already this month. They're beautiful and readying for service right now. Today, our team will submit a grant application to the Federal Transit Administration's Bus and Bus Facility Program to support the electrification of our largest bus garage, the DeBoliver Metro Bus Facility, for both infrastructure and electric buses at that location. This demonstrates our commitment to clean energy and to environmental justice as these electric vehicles would serve some of our most dense and low-income minority communities across the city of St. Louis and St. Louis County. It's a strong application. I am optimistic about its outcomes. We've also heard from our customers in the comments, "You want more, more transit service, more fixed infrastructure." And I'm pleased to report that we're working very closely with the city of St. Louis and this week just kicked off a partnership with St. Louis County to explore light rail expansion and alternatives for the North Side/South Side Corridor in the city of St. Louis and extending into St. Louis County. We are very excited about the opportunities ahead with the new infrastructure bill and the prospect of aligning infrastructure with environmental justice and affordable housing, especially if the Build Back Better Bill passes today. So while we are focused on the immediate and the great crisis that looms, know that we are focused also on a more sustainable, attractive and productive metro system that our customers deserve. This concludes my operations report this morning, Commissioners. I certainly invite your feedback and questions.
I've got two real quick questions and then I'll turn it over to the rest of the board. Thank you for that comprehensive update, Jessica, and I always appreciate when we actually have some answers for some of the public comments. I think that goes a long way. Two things. How many actual referral bonuses have we either? I guess it wouldn't have been paid out yet or have been submitted to be paid out once the employee keeps the, or is here for so many, so many days? And then have we, I don't know if enough time has passed to tell this yet, but have we seen any percentage increase with the, with the additional efforts for the new hires, once they start training or start probation to complete it? Those are just my two kind of questions when hearing about the efforts we're doing on those subjects.
Thank you, Commissioner. So on the referral bonuses, we have over 40 referrals that have come through. Whether or not those are paid out and they come in increments, it depends on the success of those candidates once we join, once they join our team and then their progress throughout the first six months and then 12 months. I can provide a written report to you that tells you how many we have in the pipeline at each stage. Can also tell you that we have hired 60 people since the recruitment incentive, the $2,000 incentive, became effective in the month of September. We are still struggling with our pipeline in the beginning. Of those 60 team members who are to fill roles, 45 of them are still with us today. And so we are working to try and improve our retention through training especially and in the months after training. I mentioned our apprenticeship and mentoring programs. We have some pretty significant adjustments coming very soon in training, and I will provide you with an update on that in the month of December. We know that that is difficult. So we're getting more people through the pipeline and we've hired additional staff just to focus on moving candidates through the pipeline because there are a great many steps that have to be taken, physicals, drug tests, background tests, et cetera, to get them actually onboard. So that process is improved, but we've got to focus more now on creating that stickiness once our operators or mechanics join our team. Have I answered your questions, Commissioner Zimmerman?
You have, thank you. Does anybody else have any questions or comments for Jessica?
Yeah, I do, just briefly. I wanted to echo what Commissioners Zimmerman said at the beginning of the meeting regarding the public comments. This probably will not be our last virtual meeting, and I doubt it'll be the last meeting where we get a lot of comments. So we do, I think, need to figure out some sort of a system to at least get a snapshot and read some of them. I would be interested in hearing thoughts and a plan on that probably at a later time, but I do think in the future we need to do that. And then my question for Jessica, one, thank you to your team for guiding us through some pretty unprecedented times. But you mentioned those 60 new referrals that we're getting. Do you feel that we are on a path now to getting more referrals and into getting our numbers back to where they need to be, to where we can reverse these service cuts? Or do you think additional steps might be needed in order to do that from the board?
Commissioner Gladney, we are on the path, but we are moving much too slowly. Two areas of focus that we are going to have to work on include our retention for existing team members, not just those early team members through training, but other team members who are leaving us to pursue opportunity, other opportunities. So we will have to have a conversation about things like schedules and compensation. You know, our last collective bargaining agreement, our biggest of our three labor contracts with ATU, was passed by this board in January of 2020, just on the eve of the pandemic. We included measures within that contract to try and focus on making the role more attractive, things like shift differentials, and that offered a higher rate of pay for weekend and evening work for operators and mechanics. Of course, we increased compensation and higher in rates. And so those higher in rates need to be an area of focus for some positions moving forward because the world has changed around us since January of 2020, and we have to keep pace, to some extent, with the wages and the benefits that are being offered by firms outside of Bi-State Development. Now, of course, as ever, I have to caution that to do so, we've got to arrive at a budget that is financially sustainable. And many of the public comments have mentioned the stimulus funding that we are leveraging right now to sustain our operations and support one-time payments like those hiring incentives. But long-term, those wage rates in our package have to be sustainable with our local sales tax proceeds and our passenger revenue. Otherwise, that's less service that we're actually able to provide, which is certainly the needs of the region that we serve. So yes, this is a conversation that has to take shape. I did mention some of those changes in training that are intended to improve the stickiness. So we're making progress, but we need to go faster.
Any other questions or comments?
Jessica, thank you for that, the update. Would it be possible to get an updated list of those projects that you mentioned, like the bus shelters, the parking lots and the lights? I know that's been an ongoing project, but if we could get an updated list of them, it would help us.
It would be my pleasure, yes, Commissioner.
Fine, thank you.
Anything else for Jessica? All right, hearing none. Thank you, Jessica. We appreciate that. Under item number 19, Unscheduled Business, we do have one item today, and that is our State Safety Oversight, the 2021 Annual Update. And Andrew Giassi is here to walk us through this. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners, colleagues, members of the general public. My name is Andrew Giassi and is the General Manager of Safety for Bi-State Development, here today to present with our State Safety Oversight partners and colleagues, Kevin Scott and Jim Smith, the MetroLink Safety for calendar year 2021. This presentation highlights our commitment to safety promotion and continuous improvement of Bi-State Development and meets the requirements set forth, 49 CFR Part 674, requiring RTAs to report to the Board of Commissioners on an annual basis. Our agenda today is going to cover a number of various areas. We're going to highlight the SSO activities, our State Safety Oversight activities, our Safety Management System Implementation Efforts, key performance indicators, and BSD's COVID-19 response efforts. The Bi-State Safety Oversight Team comprises members representing both the Missouri Department of Transportation and Illinois Department of Transportation. Members include Justin Sobek, Joshua Katz, Alexis Billingsley, and Lindbergh Askew III. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to our Bi-State Safety Oversight Team.
One of the major accomplishments for the Illinois DOT is the passing of the Illinois Public Act 102-0559, which codified the authorities given under the Executive Order 2018-3, allowing, providing the Illinois Department of Transportation the authority to take over the state safety oversight and enforce the state safety oversight. So that was a major accomplishment that occurred in 2021.
A little about our BSSO Program Standards Manual. This is the playbook that guides the interactions between the state DOTs and your agency. And we did a few changes this year in the Program Standards Manual. Enhanced Safety Plan and Safety Management System Implementation Guidance, that's been an ongoing process for the last couple of years, and we're very pleased with the efforts and work that's been done in that regard. Revised the timeline for annual review and final distribution of the document to better dovetail with your internal timelines and then our own review process. Again, an ongoing effort to make sure it serves us both well. Incorporated requirements for the Emergency Operations Plan added to that respective section of the document. Updated accident notification requirements and investigation timelines with ongoing guidance from the FTA and other industry best practices to ensure that those continue to evolve. And then Enhanced CAP Modification and Target Date Extension Process was also a big part of our update, too, to ensure that the CAP process serves both of our needs well. So a little bit about other things that the BSSO does, too. Our review and approval of the following documents would be the Public Transportation Agency Safety Plan, the System Security Plan, Emergency Operations Plan, Event Investigation Procedures, Annual Internal Audit Report and Certification, Accident and Investigation Reports, and then any ongoing corrective action plans. So that list of items there, our review and approval of those is based on, again, feedback from your agency and other industry best practices and guidance from the FTA that we receive on our end. And the third quarter this, or third and fourth quarter this year, we had a very unique circumstance. Due to the pandemic, our triennial audits ended up stacking one on top of each other. And I commend your safety and leadership throughout the agency and all your staff for assisting us with this process. It was not ideal at all, and everyone persevered and came through it in a manner befitting your agency. So thank you for all your support and assistance there. So we had a triennial audit of the Mo.SSO program and by extension the BSSO as well, since they're kind of lumped into our Region 7 interaction with the FTA. And then your own internal audits happened in October of 2021. And then our triennial safety and security audit of the agency that is wrapping up today. We were virtual two weeks ago and onsite this week. Also on the right, too, is a little bit of examples of our collaboration with Metro on an ongoing basis. Internal audits, we attend and contribute in safety meetings, safety certification of capital projects and other system initiatives, exercises and drills for emergency operations, event debriefs for reportable events, any facility and vehicle inspections done for rail and LRV. Management of change, we attend the Configuration Management Board on a monthly basis, and that's a great meeting. And then we also have ongoing meetings with Metro and BSD leadership as well.
So this past year has been the first year operating under the federal requirement of 673, which requires the Agency Safety Plan and the implementation of Safety Management Systems, which is an entire change in the safety culture. BSD has done a really good job of grabbing the SMS implementation by the horns and really, I think, by our standards, really, we believe that you guys are leading the industry in a number of different ways. Most, and really, we want to speak about the fact that promoting your safety, your safety policy with executive participation and support has been a huge establishment, especially the fact of developing a executive safety and security committee meetings that are meeting on a regularly quarterly basis with Andrew and his safety team presenting key performance indicators looking at how your safety performance is progressing. The other elements of establishing safety performance targets that are consistent with the National Transportation Safety Plan that are both achievable but also set far enough to, that real work has to be done to see those realized. Other key elements are also the employee safety reporting and the promotions of that. And one of the elements that really has stood out is the use of the QR code for employees to be able to scan and easily report any safety and hazard concerns. And that's something that we really think is fantastic and showing and embracing some of the new technology that's out there. Other key elements is the development of the computer-based safety training programs, which have been being rolled out for the entire working staff over at Bi-State. And we really want to commend, there's a number of additional elements and just really want to say that as far as what we've seen across the country and also just with the other agencies that we've overseen, Bi-State is really doing a great job of leaning into their SMS and establishing and really living through the policies and programs that are newly developed.
A little bit about some of the FTA reportable accidents that the BSSO is engaged in. Criteria for it to be reportable to us is a loss of life occurring at the scene or within 30 days, report of a serious injury to a person, and that will involve transportation, their transportation from the scene, a collision involving any rail transit vehicle, runaway train, evacuation for life safety reasons, any derailment of a rail transit vehicle at any location, anytime, whatever the cause. And so on the right, you can see the trends of the accidents that have occurred. And we continue to work with safety to monitor these and see what potential mitigations could be done and provide ideas from elsewhere in the industry as far as what other agencies are doing that are dealing with the same situations. But again, this is trending in the right direction and there's no real concern from us on these other than just continuing to work to keep them at a minimal level.
Of the reportable rail collisions that happened over the last year, two of them occurred at grade crossings. Grade crossing safety is something that the BSSO has been taking seriously and looking to advance going into 2022. It's important to note that the reportable events over the last year have been the result of motor vehicle drivers' blatant disregard for active warning devices and circumvention of downcrossing gates and preventions that Bi-State has had in place. We've worked and reviewed the investigations with the Bi-State Safety Team, and it's important to note that all of the equipment and inspections, everything has been done on Bi-State's side as much as you guys can to provide for a safe, working, operating grade crossing. Nonetheless, we recognize that the potential severity of these events and their effects on the system and specifically the operators are of concern. In 2022, the BSSO intends to assess the safety risk of Metro's crossings and evaluate where we can use our influence and position in the state to enhance our regional and municipal support to change, to enhance elements outside of Metro's jurisdiction, specifically when it comes to advanced signage and pavement markings. In Illinois, we've had an extensive grade crossing special study in which we worked on CTA and were able to really advance kind of attention as far as the municipal support in promoting, enhancing just kind of those key elements within the grade crossings themselves. And so we're looking to duplicate that here and really see how we can use our position to help and make the grade crossings safer.
Great, thank you, Josh. In addition to the KPIs presented by Mr. Katz, three other areas of interest that our team trends regularly include fatalities and injuries, trespassing, rule violations, and near misses, which is on the next slide to come. Some important highlights with the trends that you're seeing here. For fatalities and injuries, we saw a 50% decrease of injuries since 2019. For fatalities and injuries, we saw a 50% decrease of injuries since 2019, a 50% decrease of fatalities since 2019. So great work there. For trespassing, we've seen a 40% decrease from 2019 to 2020 and a 33% decrease from 2020 to 2021. Rule violations that include a number of aspects, broken switches, wrong side doors, past platforms, speeding through work zones. We've also seen significant decreases in those amounts, 12% from 2019 to 2020, a decrease, a 19% decrease from 2020 to 2021.
And we appreciate the efforts that it took to keep those trending in the right direction and we, we look forward to continuing that ongoing effort with your agency as well. A little bit about near misses, they, you can see from 2021, 2020 to 2021, they sort of trended similarly. And fortunately now, we are in pretty good shape for, for 2021. And this is due to the fact that safety and public safety have identified any of the foot traffic hotspots along the system and perhaps a station platform crossings that were, that had an increase in pedestrian traffic where people were trying to catch the next available train and not really paying much attention to what the surroundings were. So again, we appreciate the effort that goes into this. This is something we do monitor and, and look forward to continuing our ongoing work on decreasing these near misses as it, you know, pertains to operator well-being as, as well, so they don't have to, to worry about, you know, the, the ongoing psychological issues with, in regards to a near miss or, or the strike of a trespasser pedestrian.
And operators' proactive behavior. I think a few were recognized today for their proactive efforts in reducing potential collisions with pedestrians. So want to commend that.
So the past 20 months, the COVID-19 pandemic has challenged our nation. The BSD has used the national emergency to lean into the new SMS-based policies by developing a COVID-19 response plan, which was supported and promoted by executive leadership, and the use of safety data to respond to the quickly changing conditions and, and promote the agency's response policies in a clear and effective means, including an industry-leading vaccine campaign. Efforts of the frontline team and the executive support demonstrated absolute professionalism and dedication to the community you serve.
Well, thanks for that, guys. Does anybody have any questions or comments in response to the, this state safety oversight update?
A brief comment?
Sure, go ahead, Talby.
So of course, thank you. So Commissioners, thank you for your patience in this very technical issue and my apologies, but this kind of team atmosphere, we have our regulators here who have taken the time to come from out of town to be on property. We meet with them regular, this is regularly, this has become a working environment. Those trends are moving because of these sort of partnerships. I just want to recognize our bureaucratic friends and helpers from Missouri and Illinois. Mr. Katz, Mr. Sobek, Alexis Billingsley is in the audience as well. I apologize, sir, I don't know your name. But this is, this is the kind of partnership that makes a difference. And by statute, we are required to, to have them talk to you directly. And so thank you for that patience and a very full agenda, but I just wanted to recognize the, the kind of partnership between two states and this agency and your kind comments this morning. I want to also commend Andrew Giassi, of course, for doing a great job. Mr. Smith, of course, great job on this one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roch. It's a pleasure to be here this morning. This has been a long time, long time coming, so we're happy to be back in person at your agency. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate the time.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it. That was informational only, so no vote is needed. We will call the dates for future meetings. Myra, can you please read those to us?
Yes, we have a special meeting of the Board of Commissioners scheduled for Friday, December 10th at 10:00 a.m. The next Safety and Security Committee meeting will be held on Thursday, January 20th at 8:30. The next Operations Committee meeting will be held on Friday, January 28th at 8:30. We will have an Audit, Finance, and Administration Committee meeting on Friday, January 28th as well, immediately following the Operations Committee. And the next full Board of Commissioners meeting will be held on Friday, February 18th at 8:30 a.m.
Thank you. At this time, I need a motion that the Board go into executive session for the purpose of discussing legal, confidential, or privileged matters, as permitted under ByState Development Board Policy, Chapter 10, Section 10.080D1, Legal, D2, Real Estate, and D10, Auditors.
No move.
Okay. We'll need a roll call vote, I believe, on that.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Cox?
Yes.
Commissioner Zimmerman?
Yes.
Commissioner Pastello?
Aye.
Commissioner Simmons? Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Beach?
Yes.
Commissioner Gladney?
Aye.
Commissioner Galladay?
She's been having some difficulty.
Okay. I think we have enough votes anyway to go on.
Yes, the motion passed.
I'm sorry, I'm back on. What was the motion?
Just to go into executive session, you're okay with that, right?
Yes, yes, you have my vote.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Thank you, motion passed.
All right, let us know when we're in executive. Okay, the Board has reconvened to the open session. Do I now have a motion to approve the minutes from the October 1st, 2021 Board of Commissioners' executive session as a closed record?
No move.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Zimmerman?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Simmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Pastello? Commissioner Galladay? Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Beach?
Yes.
Commissioner Gladney?
Aye.
Commissioner Cox?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Do I have a motion to approve the draft year-end financial audit, Resolution 1176 as presented?
No move.
Commissioner Pastello?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Zimmerman?
Yes.
Commissioner Simmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Galladay?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Gladney?
Yes.
Commissioner Cox?
Yes.
Commissioner Beach?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Do I have a motion to approve the agreement regarding the Tiger Grant Project, Resolution 1777 as presented?
Motion. Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Simmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Cox?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Zimmerman?
Yes.
Commissioner Pastello?
Aye.
Commissioner Gladney?
Aye.
Commissioner Galladay?
Yes.
Commissioner Beach?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Finally, do I have a motion to approve the agreement for the Emerson Park MetroLink Communication Center, Resolution 1178 as presented?
No move.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Galladay?
Yes.
Commissioner Pastello?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Zimmerman?
Yes.
Commissioner Simmons?
Abstain.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Beach?
Yes.
Commissioner Gladney?
Aye.
Commissioner Cox?
Yes.
Motion passed.
There is no further business, I would request a motion to adjourn the meeting.
No move.
Okay.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes or abstentions? Meeting is concluded. Everybody have a good Thanksgiving and hope to see you soon.
You too, Justin.
You too.
Bye, everybody.